Record.
Okay. Oh, did that, did it make the hooting noise?
It did.
Was it unsettling?
It was.
It was very realistic.
But yeah, it was kind of unclear about what kind of L it was.
Yeah.
I, uh.
It's a made up trademark down.
I think so.
Yeah.
It's an all new, it's a zone species.
See what happens when we're rudderless without a chair.
You're all right.
I'm calling this meeting to order at six thirty-five. And I'm gonna start the meeting by making a motion to nominate Ben as the Chair pro tem. Is there a second? Second. Okay, and all in favor? And then you can ask to nominate.
Yes, I'd like to call for nominations for the Chair of this Board.
I'd like to nominate Amber Paris.
Second thought.
He's so swift, guy.
Assuming you're on board with it.
There should be just some discussion.
I would be lying if I didn't say I'm not intimidated to fill the extremely large shoes that Janice is leaving behind. But I am prepared to do my best.
Yay.
And now I think we have to vote.
Yes. Well.
Now you call.
But if we didn't actually.
Do I call the vote because I'm pro-tem? Okay, well then, I would like to, there's no discussion.
That was the discussion.
That was the second rate.
I intervened in.
I'm intimidated, that was.
All the questions. Well, I would like to. Um, so I would like to call for a vote on the nomination of Amber Paris as the Chair of this Library Board. All in favor? I'm sorry. We are seconded.
Seconded.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, all in favor? All right, congratulations, Amber.
Ben. But he called.
No, Ben called.
Ben can.
He seconded the, uh.
Nomination.
Nominate.
Oh, yeah. Should I not have done that?
Did someone, someone else second?
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Let's move on.
Okay, and now Amber. Okay, yeah. And so are there, can I have a nomination for the Secretary?
Oh, I would nominate Trish.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Discussion?
So I'll make a motion for Trish Roberts to serve as Secretary of the Board this year. Jim seconds. All in favor? I'm not keeping up.
They said yes.
Who seconded that vote? Jim, Jim, and Oliver. Okay, got it. And can I have a nomination for our Treasurer for the year?
Can I nominate Kevin Chappney?
I'll second it.
Susan seconded. Any discussion? You on board, Kevin?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to elect Kevin as our Treasurer for this year of the Library Board.
Seconded.
All in favor? Yay. Um, everyone has a yellow sheet that Janice printed out for us in front of them that has the current committee assignments. So if everybody could take a look at it and see if you're happy with the committees that you're on, if there's something you want to add right now. Personnel nominating and institutional long-range planning only have one trustee on them, so they could use at least one more.
And I'll, I'll go on to institutional longer.
Okay, awesome, thank you, Susan.
And what were the other two, I'm sorry?
Um, the Personnel Committee, which is essentially just reviewing and writing up Emily's review every year. And the Nominating Committee, which looks at new Board members.
I can join the Personnel Committee.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Is there anybody who is interested in the Nominating Committee that knows Towne well and people who would be good fits?
Who's good at shaking people down?
Who's good at shaking?
Sorry, Nancy, that's not, that's not.
Only Garden Committee. I'm staying on the Garden.
Yes.
Okay, well, maybe we'll think about nominating committee and somebody will, will help me with that.
Maybe the nominating committee just nominates someone.
Happy to help, but I have a heart, but I don't know people to break down.
Okay.
Exercising their duly appointed powers.
Yes, it's only Amber.
Um, okay, um, is there anything to add or remove from the agenda?
Did we make fair compensation of permanent committee or is that at all? I didn't think it was a permanent.
I didn't think so either.
I mean, not that we're not going to keep talking about it.
Right.
Who, who would keep talking about the Finance Committee or the Personnel Committee or?
Both.
So we know that it continued to be talked about at least.
I'm sorry, what's the question, Jim?
Well, if the Fair Compensation Committee isn't a continuing committee. But we want to be sure that that continues to happen. We just, it just needs to, people who are on the relevant committee need to think about it, that's all I'm saying. So I guess it's personnel.
It does make sense, I think, with personnel too, that we're sort of assessing each year when we're writing Emily's review.
And then present, and then let.
I think that makes sense to me. We have to do something formal to add that to the responsibilities, the Personnel Committees. How are we gonna remember is the real question.
Oh, I.
I think you'll be reminded.
I think we'll be reminded. The bylaws had definitions of what each of the committees.
Well, they do.
Yeah. Aren't we making another amendment to the bylaws this very meeting or next meeting? Um.
No, it's because.
I only, I only ask that question because it's listed in the committees and all the other ones are permanent committees in the Board and that one is not.
And it remains on the agenda.
So it sounds like we need to oppose a change to the language of the bylaws for the, the, what the Personnel Committee is responsible for, adding this to their radar.
If that's what, I mean, that's the.
Where it can, can be consistently part of the strategic plan and then as needed, there can be a committee to investigate year to year, you know?
Right.
Rather than the mender. It needs to be part of our strategic plan and start part of our regular agenda.
Right.
And it did come from strategic plan, it's actually the source of the formation of the.
That makes sense. Treasurer's report, did everyone get a chance to take a look at Trish's minutes she put up?
I have not been printing them for you guys.
There's your homework.
We didn't believe you. Second.
Uh, anything to add or change?
I didn't make it there.
Um, make a motion to accept Trish's minutes as written.
Seconded.
All in favor? Thanks, Trish. Treasurer's report.
Nothing in particular to point out in the operating budget, still training and travel is, um. I, we talked about that. Nothing else except cleaning is really high as a percentage too for the time of year, I don't know if that's just the way.
They raised the price, they, they raised the price after we approved this budget.
Significantly?
Yes.
What? Right, that was some part.
No, it was literally like right after, it was like this time last year, right after we approved the budget and before the fiscal year started that they, they jacked up the price significantly. So this is the, it was part of last fiscal year a little bit, but this is the first year where it wasn't anticipated, but for the full year it's been higher.
Are you still down to one piece of coal for your heat right?
Yes, can't you tell? No, it's a mercifully warmer, um, but the staff has a really nice space heater under that desk and that helps us a lot. But yeah, we, we did turn down the heat significantly after I was told we had to.
All right, I'll let our Treasurer's report. Yes.
Um, Town Meeting was great, we'll talk more about that later. Nancy's here and we did orientation.
Yay, Nancy.
The snowdrops are up on the south side of the library and the flowers have bloomed.
Wow.
Yeah, some of you were interviewed by, uh, the visiting yellow barn composer Hannah Yuzaki.
So cool.
Okay, cool, yeah.
It was very cool.
I was gonna, I put that in the newsletter and then I offered to Catherine. To like spread the word more with Facebook and she's like, nope, we're all filled up. And I was like, wow, like library people really got in there and signed up to be interviewed. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the final product of that. Um, Putney Palette workshops have been really successful and we're gonna have one more in the spring to make some vibrant berry-based colors. But in the meantime, I'm starting to circulate the palettes, I'm trying to place them with watercolor artists so that we can have a show of work made just with the Putney Palette. Paint kits that we made here in the library out of natural and reclaimed elements from our environs. And I'm, I placed the first one with the first artist today, which is really exciting, yeah. Uh, it'll be great, I'm really looking forward to seeing that. Um, we had some other really good programs, I Draw You, You Draw Me, um, Bob Etswiler doing his Get, Getting to Know Our Wild Neighbors and Char's Poetry Reading, which was also really sweet. And we have a lot coming up, um, in April and May, so brace yourselves. Uh, there's gonna be three programs in the next two weeks, uh, for Vermont Reads. Uh, there's still some copies of Gathered that we have, I'd really recommend it if you haven't read it, from an author of Vermont Story, really timely issues, the young adult book, but I, everyone can really enjoy it, you read it?
I did read it, it was really good.
It's really good. Sometimes they really pick out a zinger and this is one of them. Um, we're doing another Zoom Writer Salon event next week as well. Ben is gonna talk about a visit to Hawaii, I'm gonna start referring to that program as Ben Lords Hawaii, like. Roger Albee is going to be reading from his new book, um, Jim, that's a friend of yours and Carolyn's, right?
Yeah, Carolyn in particular, he's extraordinary guy.
Carolyn is in touch, um, he wrote this new book.
Roger Albee.
Called Turning the Soil, Two Hundred and Fifty Years of Vermont Agriculture that just came out and he's gonna do a reading, which Carolyn helps.
He's about, he's close to eighty, I think, and, um, he's done it and seen it all. Vermont agriculture, grew up in a hell farm.
And he also was this, uh, the Commissioner of our.
Yeah, he did some, the whole, he's a really good guy.
No, I'm looking forward to that.
Involved with us.
Cool. Um, and Rich Grunbein's gonna come do a presentation that goes along with his new book about local wildflowers.
Which is amazing.
The book is really cool.
Amazing.
Yeah, it's really comprehensive, he also did the tree identification books, um, which we also have. And we're gonna have a Dahlia tuber and spring bulb swap here, we're still trying to figure out the logistics, but we know what the date is and we're calling it two, basically we decided there should be something called Tuber Tuesday and then.
Oh, I like it.
It had to be on a Tuesday.
Only Dahlia.
I, we're gonna do, uh, Dahlia tubers and then we were like, oh, we should let spring bulbs in, what other kind of tubers, like elephant ears, what else?
Begonias, I don't know.
Begonias, dude.
I don't have anything to swap.
Then you come later because you're not, you're, the people that are bringing tubers come or, and bulbs come first and help organize everything and then they also kind of get first dibs. But then everyone else comes half an hour later, but I think there'll be plenty.
Okay.
You will not go away empty-handed and then next year, next year you'll have two.
Yeah.
And dahlias you pull out.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to try that.
And they, and they, and they produce a lot more, like they're, like potatoes, so if you get a tuber this year, you'll have a great many tubers.
I could, I could come to Tuber Tuesday early next year.
We have a lot of.
You'll be on the inside. You could also just volunteer to help.
Oh, I could. Oh, I put irises and, irises are dandelions. Irises are dandelions.
Okay, they are tubers.
Yeah.
And you planted them this spring?
Yes, yeah, you expect, I mean, you can transplant them in the spring.
Yeah. Yeah.
They were burnt last year, but I don't think.
Anyway, clearly we don't, we haven't braced ourselves for the full spectrum of all the different tubers that could show on Tuber Tuesday, but we know when it will be and.
Not tell, um, Brenda.
Oh, she knows.
She knows.
Yeah, no, I, I know for a fact she knows and I've actually put in a word with Dawn to get her to come to lecture us all about how to. Or give us tips about how to get our dahlias.
Yeah, no, not Dawn.
But also Dawn.
Also Dawn. Dahlias or tuber?
Um, and now we've read to the, read to Read with a Dog book, Dog, so much that he has released his own book. Or will be in April and his release party is gonna be here, we're so honored. And the Peeps diorama contest is coming, it will be announced in early April, so every, but this group knows first, you can start thinking about what your diorama.
I've been shopping for my peeps online.
Really? Online?
Cause I wouldn't green peep, they don't exist, like I can't find green peeps.
That was a limited edition last year.
I don't know, there's Frankenstein peeps that are green, but Frankenstein is not the look I'm going for.
I'm really curious.
Plan, see, so some people have already.
I, can you give us just the author, maybe not from the book? Never mind.
No, guys, come on, it's a broadcast meeting.
I'd have to ask my partner for permission, she may not, she may not grant any permission.
Okay, all right.
I would put this on the download.
I don't want this getting out. I, I, I retract, I retract.
It might be all these graphic cap.
You guys can meet in like a dark parking garage later and we can tell you, but not now.
I'll just come and see.
Yeah. Um, fundraising is up a little bit, oh, since last time I, we had a meeting, um, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents for tote bags, appeals, chapbooks, gift books.
I think we should put out a trustee challenge, by the end of this meeting, we're gonna hit thirty thousand dollars.
What is that, thirty, seventy?
Thirty, thirty-six dollars and six cents. We can do that. I'll, I'll put it, yeah. Twenty.
Yeah, the Library Fact for Trustees is kind of grim. Um, the library, what, the Library Fact for Trustees that I always put at the end of the report, usually it's like, you guys did great with something, we're, we have so many people for programs, this, this week it's, right when I was writing this, um. Uh, the executive branch of the US government had just announced that the IMLS, which is the Institute for Museum and Library Services. Uh, was issued an executive order to stop doing any work that isn't statutorily required. And then I gave you a link to an article about what it meant, but then today, um, the Vermont Department of Libraries issued a statement about it and it kind of just says. Well, it says that the Vermont Department of Libraries, who give us consulting services and a lot of structure to support other organization, they give us a lot of professional development assistance. Um, they've organized the Courier and Interlibrary Loan, they issued a statement saying that IMLS supplies thirty percent of their funding. And that's not uncommon, uh, for states, like, uh, the IMLS grants to state library departments is one of the programs they run. And, uh, they said that they would wait and see and then later today, they issued a statement saying that the IMLS says. If nothing changes, that the upcoming fiscal year will grant the state departments of libraries about the same as they have right now. But it didn't, I don't know. It's, it's hard to say, I mean, I'll keep you guys updated on that, that was issued or that, we received that statement just a little bit, a couple of hours ago. So it's unfolding, but this is, all ties into what I reported on last meeting, which is that while we receive no direct funding from the federal government, typically we are the subrecipient of grant. Of money given to the Department of Libraries, so that's the stuff that can change, I didn't realize that. IMLS funded so much of the professional development or the consulting services, so when we, you know, have an, if the Board or if I have a question and we call one of the consultants at the Department of Libraries. That's funded or that service that they provide is funded through the IMLS, I mean, so it's emerging, I'll keep you posted. Less of an exciting fact, but, oh, but a good news is, this is usually the meeting, um, the quarterly meeting where I would report on incident reports.
Just one more. We make it for me. Such a good job.
Sure, goes into the minute, the minutes of the. Because of the generosity of trustees, we've exceeded fundraiser target.
Target that we said, that you guys said five minutes ago.
Yeah, we exceeded it.
Oh, but the good news is, there's no incidents to report. So I'm gonna follow up that bad news with not bad news, um, that, and that's it. Are there any questions about the trust, I mean, the, um, what am I, the Director's Report?
Since I missed last meeting, did we do well with, um, buying a book?
Yes, we really did, you guys more than covered the expense of all the books, even though all the books were not adopted. Um, but more than two-thirds of the books were adopted and I think you guys, you guys made like nine hundred dollars and the books only cost like six hundred and fifty dollars or something like that.
Does that go into this twenty-nine thousand or?
It does. It does.
Have we crossed thirty thousand before?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, hold on.
Things are in COVID.
Yeah. Hold on, I have it right here, uh, but in twenty-twenty-four, you guys made thirty-one thousand seven hundred and one.
So we'll.
Uh, twenty-twenty-two, you made thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two, twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty-one, sorry, I said, oh, no, in twenty-twenty-four, you guys, so last year you guys made thirty-one thousand seven hundred and one.
But Susan points out that we have another three months.
Yeah, you guys, we're, we're just entering the last quarter, so, and the book sale happens.
Oh, and that goes into that amount too?
Does it? I don't remember if it's in that, yeah, I think it's in Trustees Fundraising. Yeah.
And now we're at thirty thousand twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four. Wow.
Oh, that's mine.
I should give you four pennies.
I'll, I'll take care of that, I'll find four pennies and I'll put this in the. All right, guys. Just waste that under there. That's it for me.
Awesome. Uh, Committee Reports, finance.
Um, total value of portfolio sits at three seventy-seven, three eighteen. Which is, oh, I'm, um, yeah, which is up about three hundred and twenty dollars per month, despite depression, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and that breaks out into. Three eleven, one fifty-one and sixty-six, one sixty-seven and the two different accounts, I'll just have.
Yeah, we'll get to Trish.
So a little bit up right now.
It's amazing, other two are on the blue page. Uh, institutional long-range plan, Penny's not here.
No, we, you guys approved it at the lab.
Nominating Committee, whiskey, yay, thanks for joining us, Nancy.
Thanks for having me.
Successful. Um, Personnel, there's nothing to report. Policy and bylaws, um, we, Janice and Emily and I thought it was prudent to. Add a Vice Chair position to our slate of officers. And Janice uncovered wording, so that essentially speaks for the responsibilities of what the Vice Chair would be responsible for. And so what we're proposing to add to our bylaws is to approve the addition of the position of Vice Chair as an Officer of the Board with responsibility to act as Chair. One, in the absence of the Chair, and two, in the case when a Chair steps down before a replacement has been elected. So for instance, tonight, this would have been, in instance, one of Vice Chair would have run the meeting. You know, if there's an emergency and the Chair can't be here, um, or if there's just, you know, some other unforeseen circumstance, you know, maybe. I rob a bank and like two weeks. It's a bad look. So tonight. Yeah, well.
This is a deal.
So tonight we're hoping to approve the addition of this officer position to our bylaws and then next month in April, we'll be asking for a nomination for that position from the trustees.
It sounds like.
Any questions?
Sounds like a good idea.
Make a motion. Yeah. I have to make a motion and then. Okay, sorry, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the addition of a Vice Chair position to our slate of officers for the Putney Public Library Board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, question?
Just seems like a good idea.
Great, um, all in favor? Hey. So hopefully you'll all think about whether that's something you feel like doing, um, and we'll, we'll elect someone next month. Can I make a public comment here? No. Okay. In, in thinking about this and what happened tonight, um, I think we should consider proposing adding additional responsibilities to the Secretary. That she could call the, the Secretary may call the meeting to order, um, when a Chair or Vice Chair is on. So, um, you want to include that next time as well. If you want to elect anybody.
But we need to propose that, change the bylaw, change that as well.
That's what I'm suggesting, might, might want to consider that, adding that to bylaws. So maybe next month we propose that change to the bylaws for the Secretary?
If you guys want to do it now, then you could only add it to bylaws.
We, we tend to write some wording here, wouldn't we?
Well, I think that we're just saying that we want to also. Add the responsibility, add the additional responsibility to the Secretary's responsibilities. That she or he will chair the meeting in the absence of the Chair and the Vice Chair. Is that right? Mm-hmm. Does anybody want to reword that better and make a motion? I think that would be extremely difficult for me. To chair a meeting and that is.
No.
It's not a great.
No, you just have to open the meeting.
Just open it.
Oh, just open the meeting, then.
But then.
Yeah, you just have to do what happened tonight.
And do like a pro-tem.
And call for the pro-tem. I see, okay, I, I can handle that. How did we come up with that for tonight? Is that already language that exists? Rules of order in, um, the small boards. So I feel like if it's already in there.
Do we need to change?
Then we, I don't think we need to change it. Right. No Vice Chair, we approve the Vice Chair.
No, I know, but in Robert's rules, it's not the Vice Chair or about the pro-tem?
Robert's rules of ours, how, what to, um, it's about the Secretary's role when there is no Chair or Vice Chair.
Oh, okay, so. Do we have to do anything about that?
I just said you might want to think about it, yeah, that's what somebody else.
And then I mentioned that you guys should probably add it to the bylaws.
That's the responsibility.
I didn't, I, I didn't.
Well, that's just.
I think it's standard operating procedure of a small board, isn't it, to, that a Secretary can open a meeting?
Didn't know that.
I thi, I mean, you found it in Robert's rules, though.
This rules for small board.
Yeah. I don't really know the answer to that, but that would be my assumption. I think we need to investigate further.
So, so. We'll investigate further and we'll, we'll come back to it. Okay. Uh, other committees, buildings and grounds?
I've heard tell that the daffodil bulbs have poked up, the ones that you guys planted, uh, this past year.
Yeah. Uh, fundraising and book sale planning. Ooh. Ooh. Penny did say that if no one else would, was wanting to be the point person, that she would do it.
For the whole book sale?
What, what did she do the last time?
I don't know, she did, didn't she just do Friday night?
She did this guidelines.
Right. Yeah, she did do, she, you're right, she, I think she did do a lot of it.
Be there all the whole time?
No.
Okay.
That's a.
I think the point person needs to organize everybody else around what's happening all weekend.
Last year you guys did a Friday preview party, we closed early, which was very smart to set up, and then we did a Friday preview party where many trustees attended and there were snacks provided, a lot by. Penny and Janice, um, and that seemed really successful, I think I have income. Or there, there were forty-six people that came to the Friday night party. I don't know that we have, we don't have income from that night, but that was, it was, it was for donors, so it. So it was invite only and it was thanking donors and volunteers. And that, and people were invited by email that I did through Little Green Light. And I think we agreed that we would do that again.
I think it was really successful.
I think it was too, and I think it'll only build in, you know, how many people come when, once people are expecting it. And then we did a Saturday, nine to one and a Sunday, eleven to one. Books, regular book sale and we did the raffle, um, with two baskets and a surprise ginkgo tree.
We also did a bake.
And there was a big.
I think the queen sat sort of ran the book, the bake sale for a while.
Am I remembering that we had a document that recorded a bunch of the good ideas that we had?
I have it. Do you want me to say, I actually forgot that it was on here. I was just looking at.
No, no, I was, I was just, you know, as we keep going forward, it'd be good to reference that so that we, um. We can continue to build on the lessons that we've learned.
Yeah, this one, uh, our thoughts for the future were expand the raffle, advertise in the school newsletter, free kids book coupons specifically for kids. Have a kids craft at the bake sale. Advertise the reduced prices on Sunday. I think we did half prices on Sunday or did we do by donation? Had done fill a box by donation.
I think we did half.
We did half price.
That's what I remember.
Um, it's a pretty good deal either way, Saturday or Sunday. Get more bookends, that would be my job. Definitely close at one for setup. Okay, good. So that's on Friday. I couldn't remember what time. Computer area for kids books, invite donors again and do a reminder. Get board members to share the Facebook status again. Dinosaur appearance is a must.
Dinosaur.
Alrighty.
Outside making. Yeah. Um, maybe.
He sounds like six one, so I don't think he's.
Giving, it, it has like, it has like gathered, you can be really, it'll just make the dinosaur.
He had like his seltzer inside.
We'll start recruiting for the dinosaur sooner this year, so.
With Luke, Luke helps.
Yeah, the din- the dinosaur was played by a number of different people. Maybe put a sign on top of a car for more visibility because people park out front and then they block the signs and no one, no one can see what's going on. Book sale banner across the entryway, question mark. Continue coupon. Cause we did the coupons that Janice handed out at the community supper. But you also, but free kids book coupons specifically for children is also a good idea.
The get more. One of the first things you, you.
Bookends?
Would, no, it was, uh, there need to be more things to give away. We talked, I think, didn't we about going to more of the. Businesses in town and so on to, and that there certainly be some that would probably come up with stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you guys separated things into two baskets and the baskets were really robust, like they had a lot of stuff in them. I think they could have been more smaller baskets. Or tickets could have been more expensive. Tickets were. One dollar each or, uh, for five dollars, you got six tickets.
I think we also talked about approaching more.
Expand the raffle was the second thing I said. Um, I think that's a great idea.
Remember me what weekend it is? It's not Memorial Day.
No.
The weekend between Mother's Day and Memorial Day.
So I mean, I can, I can offer, uh, two tickets to the road. Oh, great. If you want to do like a gardening basket.
The road attendant tour is awesome.
I mean, it seems like no matter what, the fundraising committee really needs to like come together, like now and like. Figure out who we're asking for raffle items and how, and if Penny wants to plan. Every point, you know, for delegating all of these different things.
In town that we could approach and who would approach them.
Yeah, I can doodle the fundraising committee who can have a more focused conversation about this. I think that the intent of talking about this tonight was to make sure that the entire board is on board with doing this level of book sale again. So the raffle baskets, Friday night, all of that. And it is tricky without Penny, but it sounds like you had a conversation with her before.
She said, are you gonna talk about the book sale? I'm like, oh yeah, I guess. Um, and she said, well. I said, yeah, you were like the point person last year. And she said, well, if somebody else wants to do it. And I said, well, would you still? And she said, yeah, well, probably. She wrote the guy.
Sorry, Penny, you flew off.
List of everything that she did.
Is this the weekend that I've made twenty third and twenty?
Yeah, it's the seventeenth and eighteenth with preview sale on the sixteenth. What? Preview, preview sale on the sixteen.
Probably the weekend of the Rattleboro School Dance Show, probably the musical at UHS and probably, I don't know.
Literary Festival in Woodstock. It's bad enough that there's seventeen things going on in Wyndham County. Anytime we do anything.
So does everyone feel like there's something in that long list that Emily just read off that isn't worth doing again this year? I mean, did it all feel, I mean, it felt easeful because there were so many hands on deck.
What about alphabetizing on fiction?
Hour maybe and it.
It was very well.
I think it was worth it.
Yeah.
I would do that again. I will, I will alphabetize.
Does having more, more baskets actually generate more money? People are gonna use a five dollars.
Get, so I just experienced a basket raffle at the hockey, UHS hockey. Yeah, spaghetti dinner fundraiser.
I used to be involved.
Oh my gosh, like I can't believe.
Well, the way they do it is you buy tickets and you put them in the different.
Yeah, and because there's so many different baskets and the prices are very similar. I mean, people were buying like sixty tickets a person. And putting them all the different baskets. It was like, I've never seen anything like it. I don't know. It's like a hockey culture thing. But I think, I guess my takeaway from that is I think our baskets can be small. Like having like two or three or four items rather than like ten. I don't know how many items. I wasn't that involved in last time. But I think like each basket can be worth less.
Yeah.
And spreading the love and people will be like, oh, I'll take twenty tickets and then they'll put five in each.
Yeah, no, that's, that's right. You're right, Trish. That's what's happened.
As opposed to like, oh, I'll take, you know, five tickets and I'll just put five in this, because there was only two baskets to choose from. Right? And they were themed. They were all themed baskets.
I mean, part of. How many baskets we end up with and what the themes are is gonna be informed by who actually gives us stuff, right? Like who we've managed to get donations from. And I, I think that that document that was created last year was shared.
I couldn't find it. The one that where we, where who was gonna approach who.
Like, yeah, we identified like, I'm gonna talk to this ceramic assistant, see if she'll donate and like. And I don't know if there's a way to then say, they followed through and said, you know, please ask me again because I really appreciated being asked.
That we could certainly track that. I could not find that document when I was looking for it before this meeting.
I'll look for it. I would expect that Penny would have it.
None of my key words. It sounds like in general, everyone is in support of the, the new level of book sale, um, which did raise significantly more over the year prior. It, we raised two thousand dollars in twenty twenty three and three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars last year.
We did also double our prices though. That was. Do we, do we have, we have like enough tote bags, right? The birthday to do the fill a tote bag.
We didn't do fill a tote bag this past year, did we? I think we didn't.
No, I think we did for, we raised the price of that too. It was like fill a tote bag for thirty dollars.
It was thirty dollars? You guys are here, thank God. Excited. I remember we were like twenty five dollars and then people really packed them full.
Yeah.
But thirty dollars made more sense. Okay. I'm glad you remember that. Not yet. Not yet. This group will know. Subscribe to my newsletter. Um, and you'll be first to know when you can start burying us in books.
You had a day or two advance.
And I feel like just learning from the birthday celebration, I feel like if we all take on a little bit, it won't feel like. Too stressful for any one individual, you know?
Last year was the first year I didn't come away with like a really sore back from the book sale because we had enough, enough like everyone. Helping a lot, um.
I don't know if you mentioned this, you talk about different ways to approach the donors to really encourage them to come, to get a better turnout with donors.
I think that we decided on this relatively last minute last year, so the invitation went out kind of late, but I could do an invitation sooner.
Sorry, that was me.
It's Ben. He's in the waiting room.
Yes.
Now we know.
That wiped my brain.
Sorry.
Yeah, donors, oh, we'll invite them earlier and then we'll do a reminder. That was something that we documented here. Because I think last time we decided it at the April meeting, so that it was like, not a lot of time. But when I announced the book sale and we put out the PR, I will do the preview sale and invite to the, to folks. So I think it'll be in April.
Did you give them some kind of idea of what kind of thing and how much it might be worth or that sort of, so that they're not feeling like they're. They, they probably want to do something that's kind of in the middle. They don't wanna, you know, do the weekend in Miami or something.
What do you mean?
No, no, no.
Kind of the donor party.
Were you talking about the donors for items?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I am unsure how that process went. That was a board run. Yeah.
What they felt comfortable giving.
And some people like the wine, we were like, sure, we offer two bottles, you know, choose what you want and, um. Elaine was writing the gift certificate as soon as I asked her. You know, some people are. Yeah. Push the boundaries of the community out there.
Yeah, I can, I can ask more cutney art people.
I think the art stuff is great, but also like that Rod's gift card was like a huge draw, right? Like the, you could have fifty bucks of gas or whatever they gave us. I don't remember, but.
That could have been just.
Like really practical items too.
Oil change.
Yeah.
There was some, I was at some event and their only raffle item was like a hundred gallons of heating oil. And it was, of course, it was like coveted, like big time.
Yeah.
The fossil fuels art. Alright, cool.
So you'll doodle.
I will doodle fundraising committee and.
And we'll let Penny know that she's in charge of everything.
Sorry, Penny, I hope she's not watching. Alright.
She said a wool workshop.
Ah, there you go. And then I was thinking like.
I thought the same thing too and I was like, really?
She's a fiber artist, but still my radio.
I have a special name, I can't remember.
Oh, that was so funny.
Oh, right. We're moving along, yes. Uh, strategic planning. So we just met before this meeting and talked about our retreat. Which we're gonna talk about later, um, in the meeting, but, um, yeah, it's gonna be great. Does anybody else from strategic planning have anything to add?
No.
No. Uh, town library relationship. It sounds like Janice sent along an MOU to Jim and Kevin. That she is, is.
The notes and.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know you actually.
Uh, garden committee.
Is that you?
I think Emily already said the daffodils are up.
Yeah, okay. Um, I kind of missed what happened there.
Yes.
With the town library relationship and what Janice sent to Jim and Kevin.
Just said, um, Jim and Kevin, who are also on that committee, um, my notes and sample MOUs and other. A draft. For them to work on and finish.
Got it, okay. Uh, fair compensation.
We just, um, wrote up the process summary and if you allow me to share my screen by going over to the little up arrow next to share. And you let me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, do that and I can just project it.
Ah, let me, I can, how can I empower you? I'm just gonna make you a progress. And I think you can.
Great.
Try now.
Yep. And let's see, this one. Uh, or this one, this is the one and share here. Okay, and then give me a second. Yep, okay, nope, wrong one, this one. Um, so what we did was just went through and came up the list of the things that we did in order to. Um, in order to move the fair compensation project forward. Um, I just have one question if anyone remembers about, if anyone remembers timing on these, that's the thing that I didn't have. Which is like how long it took. I don't know if that's useful to us at all, but, um, it might give us like. A cue at some point to be like, oh, if we're gonna do this before the fiscal year ends this year, then we probably should start. Doing research, et cetera, at a certain point. Did, did you send that around? Uh, I think I shared this with everyone. If I haven't, I'll just, I'll check the fair settings and I'll share it again, um, just to make sure. I know that Janice made a couple of comments in there and, um, and we, we made a couple of changes. But, um, yes, I'll, um, I can do that. And then if you, if I have your email address, it'll come to you. I don't think we need to go through every step here, but, um, unless people want to, but, um. Just know that the documentation is there and if anyone wants to take a look and add their two cents and remembers something that I have not. Added here, then that would be great.
Thank you so much for doing this.
Alright, that's all I got. We can return to the irregularly scheduled program.
Now I understand why you wanted to lead it to the.
Alright, I'm gonna leave and it's gonna dig or maybe.
Alarm sound.
That's right.
Um, and the anniversary committee. So the question came up about whether we want to keep this committee. Does it make sense since we're on the other side of the birthday party? Do we have other? Big events that we want to plan, what only in March?
You guys were talking about, um, the board helping more with the Ethan Tapper. How to Love a Forest event in May and we were gonna do that as a hybrid event that was online and not online. I don't know if that's our. It's not necessarily huge and splashy. It was just something that you, the board talked about supporting so that we could try to do a hybrid event. Whereas usually it's just me hosting and it makes it hard to do. Like the Zoom portion and the in-person portion. But I don't know if that's anniversary committee business.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're like saying, because it's our birthday, we're gonna try something new and bigger and better, then maybe it's anniversary related, but. Otherwise, I don't know.
Yeah.
When is this event?
That event is in May.
That's located, you said it's hybrid.
It is, yeah.
Sense that it's just.
It's Zoom and also here in person. It's May twenty eighth, actually. The week of Memorial Day. It's far away.
Well, it's like gonna be the, uh, retreat, the book sale, the board meeting, the book sale.
Two months, it's close.
Yeah, it is close and there are a lot of other board commitments, so maybe don't, forget I mentioned.
I mean, I think it's with something that we were wanting to explore and it made sense within the strategic plan.
Yeah.
I just don't know if it makes sense with the anniversary.
Anniversary committee, I think, I think it could just literally be the help of one board member and the in-person hosting thing, so I can do the Zoom part, the Zoom part of this whole setup.
Yeah, so maybe that's something that I can reach out to the trustees about next month, about uh, you know, the um, what do we call it?
The board volunteer.
Board volunteer.
Board support.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes the, the door just makes a noise, like a weird vacuum noise.
Yeah.
Somebody coming in.
So, do we wanna keep the anniversary committee? Is there anything else that we wanna plan this year that's related to the fact that the building's twenty years old? Or any other reason to keep the committee? Otherwise?
Can also mold this and talk about, like, think about it till the next meeting now.
Might as well keep the committee existing as long as the anniversary year is still the anniversary.
It doesn't need to meet. You know, I mean, just because it's on the books, doesn't mean you need to do anything like that.
Yeah, leave it for now.
Leave it.
And then we might, something might come up and I will say, that sounds like something for the anniversary committee.
Um, old unfinished business, that town meeting debris. Good job, everybody.
Eight hour town meeting.
Oh my gosh, forever.
I left in the middle for like five hours.
Till the bitter end.
And I, I just.
I saw Kim at, when I went to pay my taxes and um, I said, so get through another town meeting and yeah, it was a long one. And I said, yeah, really, we decide, I was afraid that, you know, did my questionable library budget, what?
Plus, there's a lot of covered with all the extreme increases in various places scattered around.
I don't know, there's people tucked into the cemetery commission budget this year, nobody, nobody's safe forever. Not that that, you know.
The cemetery commission and the sheriff's salary.
Yeah, but to hear it from Kim.
Yeah.
Isn't she a treasurer, finance person?
Yeah, she is, she is. And the library does enjoy awesome support at town meeting, which you guys all saw. Um, that where Janice did a great job representing the slate, we got Nancy in.
Yeah.
No questions about it at all. And then the reserve fund, I was not planning to speak on that. I thought Karen would, but I was happy to do it. That was easy.
Said what needed to be said.
Yeah, and then no discussion about that after so much discussion about the two reserve funds before it. I think also people were primed on the reserve fund conversation.
Understood it.
And I knew what questions everyone was asking, so I could just say all the answers and then, and then, yeah, there was no discussion in that.
It was really clear. Do you think you need to have a reserve, a policy for how to use that money? You know, that discussion came up so much with the other, with the fire department.
It wouldn't be at our level, would it be at our level? I think it would be at.
No, I do, it's just. It's a town level, right? I've been looking at all this MOU stuff and things like that.
Because, because of the level at which the fund and the intent was just either established or modified, I think it's a town level thing. I don't think it's an library board. We also talked about that um, anytime money is added to it, it has to be a town meeting article. So there's a lot of uh, opportunity to re redefine the intent, should, should we want to in the future.
Am I remembering that? That I guess maybe I'm just thinking about it with the other two trust fund things that came before. That Karen really focused those on, on uh, capital.
And she did for ours as well.
I thought she did for ours as well.
She did, yeah. And we did talk about that one. Yeah, I think it's fine for now. You know, I think if, if we ever wanted to change it, there would be opportunity to change it. Um, but I think it changes and it, the definitions, and I think the parameters are at the level of approved at town meeting, not at if we have a policy and then it changes at town meeting.
I see.
Do we need to change, like then we have two, two different things kind of defining its.
I guess so, it is, like, how, if we say we want to do X with the building and we want to tap that reserve fund in order to do that, do we just have the autonomy to say, we're withdrawing that money or does the town have to approve that that's?
All things like that, at that level, um, anything over, I believe, ten thousand dollars, we need to go out to bid for. And we do that in partnership, especially relating to the building. Uh, we do that in partnership with the town because the town is financially responsible for the building. Anything like that is gonna be in partnership with the town anyway. So there's not gonna be some rogue situation where we're trying to use the money for something, um, and they're saying no, like, we all have to agree.
Sure.
Um, I can't really imagine, I mean, building needs are to me so clear, like for that, if, if we get word that the I, I, we need heat pumps, like, we just do, like, we're, we're gonna, we can't really limp through another summer without repaired air conditioners. So I was gonna approach Karen pretty soon and, and check in with her and see if we could begin to move forward on the bidding process for heat.
I guess the one thing that's still unclear, maybe it's, it's just something that continues to be unclear, was when does the town pay for stuff related to the building and when do we pay for things?
We have.
And we have that MOU.
We do have the MOU and it seems like it was sort of like envelope versus furniture and carpet.
So would that apply to the trust fund? Is what, you know, how, where does the trust fund fit into that?
The reserve fund, I'm seeing the reserve fund as town money because it was raised through taxes. Unlike the trustees' um, endowment, which was raised through fundraising. So the, the MOU lays out, and I can resend out the MOU so that we're all on the same page, because I'm sure, I, I certainly haven't looked at it that recently. Um, the MOU states that the trustees fundraising money can go towards assisting with projects like the carpet or furniture stuff, or you know, sort of softer things like that, whereas the town is responsible for a new roof.
Right, so if we ever reached a situation where you said, well, there's this thing that needs to be done, you went to the town and they said, no, you should do that, not the trust fund, that would be, um, I'm sorry, the reserve fund, that would be um, governed by the MOU, that, that would be the, the thing we would look at to decide how that would work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, in establishing the town reserve fund, there was all this talk about catastrophic events. Which eventually they didn't put catastrophic in there, but that was kind of a sense that that money would only be used in the event of.
No. Let's just, can't we just place stuff before, before the building's molding. That it's cheaper to do before it's. Yeah. Um, I also, the other, we're the only department, department, we're not exactly a department, we're the only thing that has the capacity to fundraise and has an endowment. So, you know, catastrophic event, if, if there was a absolutely necessary emergency repair that couldn't be put, put through the town process fast enough. I mean, we have an endowment, like.
Like a roof leaking.
Yeah, huge tree falling.
Even that, it's insurance, so it's kinda. So I can't imagine what a catastrophic event would be.
Well, they could at town meeting, but we, I wasn't imagining it for us. They didn't do that.
I think, yeah, it was, yeah. I, I think that the discussion of, uh, like, the reason people are talking about that was because there was some concern about handing over a bunch of money to a select board without direction for how that money should be spent. And so it was just simply one of the things that was raised. I think that the reserve fund for the library is much smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And um, I think that it's already clear that it would be spent on the library. So I think that's one of the reasons that there was less discussion and less concern.
They're not calling it a capital reserve fund, they're just calling it a reserve fund?
That's right, that's right.
With the intent to take care of capital and, yeah, expenses.
Okay.
So is that where the heat pumps will come from? That, I had been waiting on that project, um, because we were, because there was going to be uh, federal money that was originally supposed to be available in October. And that didn't happen, and then the, the broad timeline was twenty twenty-five, and now the website's just been taken down.
Yeah.
Um, it was, it was like, as I described earlier, the thing where we would be a sub recipient of federal money given to the Department of Libraries to met out to Vermont libraries for capital improvements, and it is, the future of that is uncertain. There is a, uh, Wyndham County Librarians Meeting with one of the state Department of Libraries consultants uh, this coming week, and I will certainly ask about it and they'll probably tell me they don't know. Which is what they've told me the last times I've asked about it, but there's a lot more unknown now, so. I feel like we, this is not a project that we can continue to, to wait on, and I'd love to see the, the work done in the next six months.
So that would be out of the reserve then?
Ideally, that's what, I mean, that's the most, to me, the most emergent project that we have.
There's only twenty-five thousand dollars in it, that's only two, two and a half.
I think it's, we're based on quotes we've gotten, I think that.
Within that range.
It was, I think it was, I think it was thirty-two, I think it was thirty-two thousand dollars, so it wouldn't take care of all of it. But it would, it would certainly, you know, be.
Four, probably.
Well, I don't know, they're all different capacities now. We have seven presently, and of the seven, I think four work and two are in offices that are in public areas. So we have two in the public areas that are working, one's in the children's room and one is right there. And we've been, they're twenty years old, like the building, and we've been limping along with them, like, it's, it's time to figure it out. But Karen and I have talked about it relatively recently. I know she also had another potential pot of money that we might be able to use towards them. So now the town meeting's over, I'd like to talk to her about it, sort of see where we're at.
Okay, great.
Oh, so, so that was, that was the wrap up to our town meeting, was great. And federal funding is doomed, but.
Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, new business, the board retreats. So we have a date, which is May tenth, May tenth, from eleven to three.
Yes.
And it sounded like you were not gonna be able to, you were gonna.
I said, you said Jen. Yeah, I thought that you had said you couldn't come that day. Great, that means you can.
Don't think I said that.
I mean, you said it in a doodle poll, so it might have not been.
I must have clicked the wrong button.
Yeah, one hundred percent participation.
And it's at the Putney Community Cares.
It's at the Putney Community Cares Activity Barn.
And Emily is going to explore our, our lunch menu, so if you have any food, allergies, requests, restrictions.
Or preferences.
Preferences.
For catering restaurants, the porch does not want us, we're too small. That's not a possibility.
Oh, really?
Yes. Minimum order, five hundred dollars. Talked about the diner and we talked about the general store, so I'll look into possibilities and we'll vote on a budget next time.
Um, ah, outdoor spring event. So we, at one point, it may be in discussing how popular the solstice event out in the the stone seating area has become, talked about trying to do something similar on a seasonal basis. Um, spring is in two days, so we're not gonna hit that. But do we want to have something out there for the spring? Um, and what could that look like? Just something to offer to the community as an opportunity to gather with or without a fire pit, and you know, we've done snacks and drinks. Um, we've had the BOHS, um, acapello group come and sing, and that was quite popular. Um, it could look really different.
I love the idea of, of uh, like doing solstices and equinoxes as kind of a thing there, right? That, that's, I, I, I like that. I know that, as you said, we won't be able to do it this year, but that's kind of cool. Yeah.
Does it make sense at all to piggyback on the peeps celebration? Or would it make more sense to have something separate? That's an additional.
The peeps party, it's definitely, could be pretty festive.
Is that in May?
The peeps party is in May, it's, it's May sixth.
There's a lot of that.
I know, exactly, yeah. Let's give more things to the board members for May. Uh, the peeps party, we did the first one last year and it was the uh, public announcement of winners of the Peeps Diorama Contest, and there were snacks and a chance for all of the Peeps Diorama artists to gather and receive appreciation and compliments on their dioramas. And it was actually pretty small, I think it was at the same time as some soccer things um, last year, but I'm I have no idea if that's gonna be the case this year, but, so it wasn't a giant event. Um, it's five to six, so it's earlier than most things, it's during hours. And it's only for an hour. We could toast peeps over. They're really gross and bad for you. I feel like there was like a, something about arsenic in them. I really like to celebrate them as a, as a artist material that will endure for years.
With the, the yellow pigment, I don't know. Um, what about, um, I mean, we don't necessarily have to do something in spring, if like, if we have a long-term vision of doing something seasonal. Um, you know, and spring's too short, a deadline to meet, we could think about setting up for something for summer and autumn. We already have a winter one.
I like that, I like that too.
And summer, I, like, um, if we wanted to reprise the sidewalk chalk festival, that might be a good day.
Julia's already planning on that.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Um, I don't.
Summer around the end of June?
I don't, no, it's not, because summer meetings compete entirely within the month of July.
Discover the, discover Putney Street thing.
That was in the fall.
That was.
It was in the fall, okay. Cause it could do something.
Could coincide.
Contemporaneous with that.
Yeah.
Let's also talk to the yellow barn to see if they wanna collaborate on like summer, because they would be maybe starting their
Right.
Festival series.
Yeah, during their series, that would be great. I'm, I know they're looking for more chances to collaborate.
I think it would be lovely to do like a um, you know, storytelling, some more roasting event.
I like that.
In the warmer.
And definitely not peeps.
Yeah, not, not the peeps, but yeah, just have it like, like have fire at the library or whatever.
I like, I like that storytelling.
I think that's the thing about the solstice that's so nice, like, it's simple, it's a fire and maybe some singing and a hot cider. Treats, it's not elaborate. Yeah. Yeah.
I could be the storyteller or we could get someone else. I would do that.
Or you could even get, like, you have a little sign up and just have different people tell a five-minute story.
Oh, that's lovely.
I think that sounds good.
Do you feel like that's something that you can like, because I'm, I'm like, I had the thought, like, does this belong in one of these committees? And nothing's like, rising to the top in my head, so is that something you feel like you can hold in your head to move forward?
I mean, I can be the point person.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would kind of opening up to saying spring slash summer that we're not, or.
Like warmer months.
Just sooner than later, but not in two days.
Yeah.
Maybe the anniversary, maybe it becomes Special Events Committee. Big looking, it seems like there's been a lot of those little things.
Now, the solstice be good, the summer solstice.
I mean, that'd be lo- lovely. I might not be around, but if, I like Ben's idea in terms of like soliciting stories, that just would take a little bit more.
Yeah.
Effort.
And if we have the little, like you said, the little, some marshmallows, make some s'mores, like that's, that's the whole party right there.
Yeah. So I can definitely be the point person to move this forward.
Okay.
If we feel like we wanna make it for the solstice. Um.
It'd be nice if you were here though, Trish, it was your idea.
Yeah, I mean, I don't actually technically have plans yet.
But you have to guard the time.
We would take a family vacation that we haven't planned yet. In, in the two weeks.
I know I'm away then, in your way.
I think it could be solstice adjacent.
How about just welcoming summer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some more.
About then.
Usually, usually a June twenty. Couple days after.
Yeah, I don't know what it is this year. Yeah.
Summer.
I can see what people are objective.
Anyway, I can do some looking into it, how about that? And I can have a couple of different dates that I'll put out to people, maybe, and then people can vote or something, move forward like that. And I can figure out when the last day of school is gonna be and.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
When the pool opens, you know, just like, right?
Yeah.
I know, just part of the town, like, here's summer, welcome summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Projected last day for students in twenty-five is twenty-third.
Inhumane.
It really is. So beautiful in June.
Like they're earlier.
Yeah.
Don't, don't wanna do it the same weekend, the, a party the same weekend the pool's open.
Well, I'm sorry. Opening is never a solid.
I mean, it's huge. Weekend after school. Because the lake bars are done with school, and then they can start.
I guess just sometimes they've had issues with the pool and you started later than.
Yeah. It is usually pretty close to that.
What if we didn't eat the week, like, the last weekend in May, the first weekend in June, it's like May.
Isn't that?
Memorial day.
Oh, no, 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 the more.
The thirty-first and the first.
You're right.
The weekend after.
I won't be available, but, I, I, that's our Rhoda Denton tour.
Or maybe at some point in that first.
In the first.
Like in early June. Early June, maybe before school gets out.
When will you be here, ma'am? Yeah, I think it's important that Emily is there.
When do you?
I will, I'm not leaving until sometime the second week in June.
Yeah, so, cause even the solstice thing, it's not always on a weekend, it can be on like a random like weekday.
Yeah, it can.
Like, maybe during that first week of June, between the second and the sixth or something?
That sounds great, um, there's evening programs on the third and fourth. Uh, knitting, and there's a planning commission meeting here, but they probably wouldn't appreciate us coming in and out. I'll be gone that week, but I don't need to be here. Well, the Thursday is a good time and the Friday is a good time.
I feel like I would vote for the Thursday.
Well, here, let me just, can I just do a little?
Yeah, yeah, I think we can, we have time.
I feel like if it's just like stories and s'mores, it's not something you need to know, like.
And we could talk, this could come up again at the next.
Thanks, Trish.
Yeah, I'm excited about that. I feel, but I think it'd be lovely for you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, any other business?
Public comment? On behalf of this community, I just wanna say what a fabulous board this is, how much you accomplish every year, um, what joy to be if you bring to the community, and the community loves you, as was obvious at the town meeting, so keep it up, good work.
Okay, next board meeting, April sixteenth. That works for everybody? Oh, wait, I thought it was on the fifteenth, like the Tuesday.
Yeah. Fifteenth, yeah.
Oh, okay. April.
Wouldn't be one of my agendas, if I mistake.
And I won't be in town, but is it okay if I have women?
Of course.
Of course.
It's fifteenth, is that?
Yeah, that's the Tuesday at least. It is dirt, like, I don't know if this makes a difference for people, it is during that, like.
Vacation.
Yeah.
Will anyone else be gone?
Probably, but I don't know what days yet.
Okay.
Because we're waiting in for the weather to find out.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-nine?
Second.
All on paper? Yay!
So I, I did bring a bottle of wine to.